South Cape, and I see them, we walk up to the golf course each morning, and I see them up there. Just beautiful. No, it's a precious, precious time of year.
Like everything's reborn.
Yeah.
The ospreys, did you see the osprey on Monomus Goy on the toe?
Thank you for joining us tonight at our Select Board meeting. There we go. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us at tonight's Select Board meeting, held here Monday, May 15, 2023, in the Walk White Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. Broadcast live on local cable channel 18, stream live on the Town of Mashpee website. The time is now just past 6:30, and we're going to convene the meeting in open session. We'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for all those that have passed, our first responders, and those that defend our freedoms. Thank you. So at this time, I'd accept a motion to approve the Monday, April 24, 2023 regular session meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion is unanimous. I'd accept a motion to approve the Monday, May 1, regular session meeting minutes as well.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. That motion's unanimous by all present as well. Appointments and hearings. We have a special guest with us, local district attorney, Rob Gallaboy. If you'd come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome. Thank you for bestowing us the honor of having you at our little old Mashpee meeting.
No, thank you very much for the invitation. I really appreciate this opportunity to come in and give all of you a little bit of an update of what our office has been doing. Today is officially my fourth month, one week, and fourth day, so I'm pretty excited to share some things with you. And I saw the heavy agenda, so I promised to keep this brief. On January 4, I was sworn in as the district attorney. And as I mentioned leading up to that point, I maintained a promise. I appointed Jessica Alumba to be my first assistant. The first assistant role is essentially like the top prosecutor in the office. They're in charge of all the cases that we handle, which in numbers, a little over 15,000 on an average basis. Jess is the first woman to ever hold that position in the history of the Cape and Islands, which is almost 50 years old. Under Jess's leadership, she starts what we refer to as vertical prosecution. What that is, is when someone comes into court to be arraigned, starting the process, a DA or assistant DA is assigned to that case at the arraignment and remains with that case all the way through the court system, all the stages, the pre-trial motions, the disposition or the trial of the case. And as you might imagine, that makes it a lot easier for the cases in where we have victims, that they know from the very beginning, all the way through the case, which prosecutor is going to have their case. And it also makes it easier for our law enforcement partners as well, because they know from the outset which prosecutor is going to have the case that they brought to the court. Also, under Jess's leadership, we formed an unsolved homicide unit. When I took office, there were nine unsolved homicides across Cape and the Islands. Within the first week, she formed two teams, if you will, within our office to form this unit. And within two months, we brought two first-degree murder charges against two individuals relating to a 2011 homicide. And I can let you know that we are continuing with another particular homicide, a dated case right now that we hope to have an announcement within the next couple of months. We've also began, I think this is a first for the office, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. It's being chaired by Angelae Scott Price. She is, I believe, the vice chair of the Select Board in the town of Falmouth. We also have on the committee a woman named Tara Vargas Wallace. Tara Vargas Wallace founded and is the CEO of Amplify POC. We are still recruiting for this committee. I've been mentioning this to all the select boards that I've had a chance to appear before so far, and my intention is to go across the entire Cape and both islands. That's 22, for those of you who are counting. And I've been mentioning that we are asking people to consider joining the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. We are getting a lot of interest, and we plan on having our first organizational meeting next month. Also, under Jess's leadership, we've formed a grant writing department. The grant writing department is staffed by a full-time employee, and our focus at the moment is anti-human trafficking efforts, trying to get grants involving those efforts, as well, of course, as the opioid epidemic. When I came into office, I had a goal, and I was able to attain it, of meeting with each police chief across my district in their own offices. And I met with Chief Carline about six, eight weeks ago. And I asked him one, both questions. What did you like under the previous administration that you would like my office to continue? And what would you like to see, perhaps something a little different? And I spoke with his office for about an hour. And while I'm speaking of him right now, I hope he's doing well, and I'm looking forward to his return. Couple more things. We are now collecting data in our office. This is something that's never occurred before. We began just a couple of weeks ago, on May 1, we put our administrative assistants through some training. And right now, we're starting to note on every single case that comes into our office, regardless which of the five district courts or three superior courts. We're noting certain things like gender, age, race, ethnicity. What are the charges? Is there a bail? Are you being held on bail? You're not being held on bail. And again, we just started this on May 1. We hope to have whatever kinks exist in it out by June 30. So from July 1 through December 31, I'll be able to produce a report, not just for us internally to review, but to put it in an annual report, if you will, for all of you to get to see exactly what we're doing, how we're treating the cases, and to come back with whatever comments and thoughts that you have in the way we're handling cases. We're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can. And finally, I want to end with this. Perhaps the biggest platform issue the past year leading up to my election to the position, and this was just formally announced last week by the trial court, a mental health specialty session in our district court. That was the number one, in my opinion, platform issue. That was well-received wherever I went. People had gained an interest in it. And just again briefly, this mental health specialty session court is when professionals in the field come right into the courtroom, and they work with a struggling defendant before the court to try to identify what mental disorder or disease the person is dealing with. And when they get to make that identification, as you might imagine, then you can try to treat it. And when you try to treat it, of course, you reduce recidivism, making us all safer. Judge Julian announced last week that we are getting one here in the Barnstable District Court. And while that may only serve, on paper, at least at the moment, Sandwich, Barnstable, and Yarmouth, I can let you know, should cases arise in Falmouth, Orleans, and I believe Mashpee goes to the Falmouth District Court, those cases can in fact be transferred to the Barnstable District Court, so those services can be provided to this jurisdiction as well. So I really do appreciate you allowing me to come in, Mr. Chairman, and members, to give you this update. If you would allow me to come back in about six months with another update, I'd greatly appreciate that opportunity as well.
I think I suffice to say that, you know, you're welcome back anytime your schedule allows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that.
We appreciate the updates, look forward to your guidance and direction as the newly-appointed district attorney. And, you know, it sounds like you have some really good initiatives, and look forward to hearing more from your office.
Thank you very much, sir. Have a good evening, everyone. Good luck with your meeting.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go into public comment. We have only two people that have signed up. We welcome back friend Ken Dobrowski.
Okay, Ken Dobrowski, Three Gray Field Landing. Okay, I'm not here to complain, whine, or preach. Shocking, I know, right? What the hell is he here for? I'm here to thank Mr. Collins and his finance team for the time they spent with me last week sometime. Dewan, Greg, and Joe Gibbs. You know, we went through, my initial question was about the CPC funding, but we answered that pretty quick. And then we went through a whole bunch of things, and it was very enlightening for me. Raised another couple of issues that I will whine, complain, and preach about in the future. So, you know, don't go crazy. I don't think this is a new trend with me. So, but anyway, yeah, I just want to publicly acknowledge the time these folks were very generous, courteous, and very generous with their time for somebody who's done nothing but throw rocks at them for like eight or nine months. So, thank you so much.
It's not often that we get praise, so it's welcome. Feel free to come back anytime.
Like I said, it's a one-time deal.
Duly noted. Thank you. The next public comment we have is Brian Whedon, chairman of the Mashpee Wampanoag.
133 Main Street. Good day. I'm here as a private citizen. I'm not really here today as the chairman of the tribe. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about kind of the issues and kind of the games that are being played. As we know, there was supposed to be an appointment tonight for Yvonne Avant, who was put in for the Community Preservation Committee. And at this point in time, I heard that it might be tabled or postponed because of some questions that were raised by a committee member who was also an employee of the town after the fact. I feel like, you know, her resume speaks for herself. I feel as if Selectman Whedon, Chairman Whedon, excuse me, wasn't the only Wampanoag on this board, we wouldn't have any Wampanoag representation on the Community Preservation Commission Committee. And to me, that's kind of unacceptable, because we're supposed to be preserving the community. And this is an at-large seat. There's four at-large seats. So kind of, you know, more upset about the things that are going on. And in this day and age, I mean, we can agree to disagree. It wasn't even over a year ago that, you know, the chairmanship was basically stolen from Chairman Whedon when he was the vice chair. And that kind of, you could say it wasn't because he was a Wampanoag. We can agree to disagree on how we might feel about that. But at the end of the day, I don't think that we're leading by example with these kind of, you know, initiatives and tactics that are still being played. It's still part of the good old boy and girls network here in town. And I'm just here to speak up against it and just say that, you know, it's kind of unacceptable. And for us to be the leaders, you know, being the leader of the tribe, if my tribal council takes a vote, and one of those council people has an issue after the fact, well, the vote was already taken, and it was already taken up. I think there's other Community Preservation Committee members that are here and present that might have been in support or in opposition. But I feel like if people are going to raise concerns, they should probably come before everyone. Those concerns should be raised in front of everyone so that everyone has the opportunity to hear what those concerns are. And the fact that they're not, you know, here to face, you know, the questions or, you know, raise their concerns is definitely an issue for me. And I feel like if it was something that did happen on the town's time, I feel like there should be a formal investigation done into this. And if not, I feel like, you know, the State Ethics Commission can also, you know, intervene and do an investigation here. But all around, I'm just here to say that, you know, I'm really kind of disappointed. And it's sad that Wampanoags are still being discriminated against, you know, 400 years later. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whedon, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't sign up. Could I be recognized?
Yes.
Thank you, Brian, for having the courage to come up. I'm a member of the Community Preservation Committee. On the night that we interviewed candidates and voted to recommend unanimously Yvonne Avant to be appointed to the Community Preservation Committee, there was no irregularities in that meeting. Absolutely none. Okay? There was only one motion made. There wasn't only one motion recognized. It was only one motion made. Now, it's my understanding that the person that has called for this item to be postponed because of a procedural error was in the room and is a committee member and did not make a motion for anybody else, for anybody, although they had the opportunity. Okay? I think that this situation should be investigated. There were things that were said after that meeting that were not nice. Okay? And I think that we should have an investigation on this. I have been told that some things that I haven't, I've said, weren't appropriate, and I've been told I could get investigated. Okay? I think this warrants an investigation. Because I agree with Brian. And it's very sad. It's very sad that this has to be discussed again and again and again in this town. That when a tribal citizen comes and applies for something, there's always a problem. There's always drama. There's always a question. There's always something. And you just are not scratching down enough into the, past the surface to see how much prejudice there is. For 12, over 12 years, I have been, as a white person, standing up for the Native Americans of this town. And the crap that I have gotten in response from white people has been nasty and intolerable. I am very sad that Yvonne Avant isn't here today. And I ask the chairman not to remove this item from the agenda. You have the power. Keep it on there and force the vote. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We don't have any other public comments at this time, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, the Barnstable County Retirement Cola Discussion and Possible Vote. Treasurer Craig May, if you'd come forward. I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't have a copy of your title, name and title, as our guest.
This is Susie Holmes, the Barnstable County Director, Barnstable County Retirement Director. She, I spoke to her a few days ago, and she asked if she could come along, and I said, asked the town manager, and he says, that sounds good.
Welcome, Miss Holmes.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
So first, I'd like to thank Mr. Dobrowski for the compliments and keeping coming. So in your packet, you should have the memo that I wrote to Town Manager Collins about the Barnstable County Retirement Association and the vote for or against the 2% additional cola to retirees on the first $18,000, and what it would cost the town in FY '25 and '26 if you vote yes. And so currently, a 3% cola is given on the first $18,000 of the person's retirement, and this would be an additional 2%. So if you have questions, you certainly can ask myself, and if you'd like to add anything.
So we're adding 2% to the 3%? Yes, the board voted to a lot of retirees to have 3% as of July 1 of 2022. And the governor actually passed legislation to allow the retirement boards across the state to do an additional 2% because of all of the costs, that inflation and everything. So each retirement board had to go through its own process. Us being the county, we actually have to go to all of our towns, and we need at least 2/3 of the towns to approve it in order for the retirees to get the additional 2%.
It is, it is my understanding that the Social Security Administration, due to the resulting cost of living increases that have transpired since 2020, following COVID, have been significant and sizable. So I believe the Social Security Administration actually did, I want to say 6.5%.
I think they actually went higher. I think it was 8.7.
Or higher. So, you know, I don't see this as out of sorts. Town manager?
Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe seven have already approved it, seven towns, and one has voted against it.
Correct. We have seven that have approved it, one no, and we need a total of 10 in order for this to go forward.
How does this affect our budget?
The, if you don't mind, the additional, the additional funds would be raised in FY '25 and '26, and it's $55,059.70 in FY '25 and $58,253.17 in FY '26, as it currently stands. So it's not going to change the appropriation for July 1, because it's too late to do that. And Director Holmes accommodated all the towns with that estimate.
Did any other members of the board have questions or concerns with this particular item? Did any other members of the board have questions or concerns with this particular item? So I guess I entertain a motion to accept and approve the recommendations of adding the additional 2% additional cola to the recommendation to the Barnstable County Retirement Association.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. The motion is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
By all present. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. At this time, we'd like to welcome our DPW Director, Catherine Laurent, to the table. Yeah, the first items on the agenda. We're just following the agenda. At this time, it's the discussion approval of the change to the transfer station schedule. And then following that, the discussion approval of the transfer sticker fees.
Good evening. So the first item, as just mentioned by the Chair, is a request to change the days that the transfer station is open and closed. Currently, the transfer station is closed year-round on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We've run into some issues recently with the Thursday closure. A number of the facilities that we use for our recycling only accepts recyclables on Thursdays. So our operator has had to pay overtime for their staff to work on the Thursdays in order to deliver those loads. So we're proposing to change the schedule to, the transfer station would be open Wednesday through Sunday, closed Monday and Tuesday. That Monday is our quietest day of the five days that we're currently open. It also, we have a number of Monday holidays which tend to confuse people that, you know, the transfer station is open, but they assume because it's a holiday that we're closed. So that is our recommendation would be to change it to the Monday, Tuesday closure.
Any members of the board have questions or concerns?
I don't have a problem with it.
No, I think it makes sense. And so at this time, I'd accept a motion to support and approve the schedule change of the transfer.
Second.
Effective July 1st, 2023.
Correct. With your vote tonight, we would start advertising to notify the users.
I'll entertain that modification to the framed motion, adding the July 1st, 2023. And so at this time, not hearing any discussion. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol? And I'm a yes as well. That motion is unanimous by all present.
Thank you. The next item is our annual look at the sticker fees for the transfer station. And consistent with the board's policy from prior years, we are proposing that the users would fund 100% of the operational costs of the transfer station. This past year, we've had some, I guess, increased costs due to the recycling market as well as the cost of fuel. And because of the recycling markets not being as lucrative, it's cost us money where historically we've actually been paid for some of the materials. So because of that, we, I am proposing a sticker fee increase for a first household to $2.20 and a recycling permit increase to $40 for the year.
So you're increasing the recycling $5?
Correct.
And the first household permit $15?
Correct.
So does any members of the board have questions or concerns?
No, it's the cost of business doing business. I wish there was a way out of it, but there isn't, and we all have to deal with it. So I don't have a problem with it. I know you work the best you can to keep the cost down. We appreciate it.
Mr. Tony Miners?
Yeah, I would just add, Mr. Chair, this is all part of the plan to maintain sustainability and keeping everything balanced, which was the direction of the board several years ago. So that's, as you say, that's the cost of doing business.
And it's a modest increase.
Yeah, the alternative is having, you know, people pay for at-home pickups. And that's going to be significantly more in the long run. So I think it makes sense to. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to maintain, increase the level of funding of the transfer station by users. I recommend the first household sticker fee be increased to $2.20 and the recycling sticker fee be increased to $40.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion is also unanimous by all present.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine.
Because we are behind schedule, I think we will jump forward to the scheduled public hearing that was supposed to take place at 6:50. Alcoholic Beverages License Amendment, 25 Market Street, Inc., Doing Business as Cafe Trevi, 25 Market Street, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Mr. Clerk, if you could read the public notice?
Did the best I can. Thank you, sir. Pursuant to Chapter 138, Section 16A, the Massachusetts 155 laws. The Select Board acting on the local licensing authority of the town of Mashpee will conduct a public hearing on the alcoholic beverage license amending, amendment application on 25 Market Street Incorporated New Business as Cafe Trevi, 25 Market Street, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, for a change or alteration of premise. Said hearing will be held on Monday, May 15th, 2023, at 6:50 p.m. in the White Meeting Room of Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road, Mass., North Mass., Mashpee, Mass. You can submit, it's a little late, and question via email or Boston@MashpeePMA, per Mass., Mashpee, Mass., governed prior to the meeting date and time.
Thank you for that. Welcome, Ms. Samantha Davis. Yeah, did you want to walk us through any of the proposed changes and alterations that are being proposed?
So what I'm looking to do, during COVID, we did the expanded seating outside of our patio. We had sidewalk seating, which I'm not looking to continue. What I'm looking to do is to add four tables that we've had the past two summers up by our fountain. So it would be four tables, eight additional chairs. And the section is chained off from, there are four courtyard benches by the fountain that's in front of Trevi. So it would be chained off from the public. And that is what I'm looking to do. It's been very well received in the past few summers. So I'm looking to make it a permanent seating option. And it would probably only run Memorial Day to Labor Day. It's not covered, so once the weather gets cool, people tend to migrate back down to the covered patio.
One question I have is if it is something that you're looking to do in a permanent, you know, is there any anticipated plans to change the fencing to something more obstructive? Like fencings or rails?
I think, I don't know if that would be at the discretion of the Commons. I did contact Tom Ferranti and proposed what we have been doing and what we would continue to do. They didn't seem to have an issue with the chained-linked fence. I don't know if that would be something that they would want to make permanent fencing. Like I said, the seating would only be like a seasonal temporary seating. So I would be open to whatever, you know, the Commons or the town would be looking for.
I guess when I think about it, you know, I just wouldn't want any miners or anything to be on the outside and drinks kind of working their way out into the general public from the area. So, you know, having some sort of delineated obstruction between, you know, the public space and the private space, I think is incorrigible, you know, for a permanent, if it's going to be permanent. That's just my personal. I mean, I don't know if that's, there's any policies that require that, but it would be my personal recommendation.
You've got a good question. I'm trying to visualize it. I don't know if I saw any photographs of. But so the, where the fountain is, is going to be basically an island to itself with a fence around the perimeter? Or how will they walk from the?
So the way that we've run it in years past is they enter through our patio. And there is a wrought iron gate that has separated the courtyard from Trevi. But it does open and close. And there are two steps that lead up to like a little cement area where we put the two tops on each side. And then, like I said, the chain-linked fence just goes kind of right around the perimeter to keep people from entering and leaving. So they only enter through Trevi's main entrance through the patio. I know it's kind of hard to envision. So the fountain is in the center of the courtyard. And then they have the four benches. And then the four tables are kind of right on the upper level from our main patio. There's like, it's like right on the perimeter.
And going to it, is it direct? I guess I'm a little confused. From the restaurant egress, there's some benches out front right at the door entrance?
We close that entrance off completely where those fountain tables are. So anybody that gets seated into the restaurant has to enter through that main opening of our patio. There's actually two enters and exits of the patio. But mainly during the summer, they come in through one exit and then they see the hostess stand. And then they get seated up through those few steps onto those four tables. So it's kind of like it's, we don't really let people enter and exit through the courtyard. They have to go actually through Trevi. I know it might sound a little confusing, but visually.
It's probably better, in my opinion, that they have to go through.
Right. Just, it's the same setup as you have had the last couple of years, correct?
Yep.
And all your abadus have been notified?
Yes.
I'd accept, is there any other questions or concerns?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
By the table? We still have to open it up to the general public?
Okay, okay.
Is anyone from the public audience here for the public hearing? And would you like to offer comment at this time on this specific matter?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Hearing of first and second, we'll call on closing the public hearing. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela? I'm a yes as well. Public hearing is closed. At this time, I'd accept a motion to approve the Alcoholics Beverage License Amendment to 25 Market Street, Inc., Doing Business as Cafe Trevi, for a change or alterations on the premises as stated. Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom? John? Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion is unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hope you have a great sermon.
Thank you.
So that was the only time-sensitive matter on the agenda. We'll go back to where we left off in the preceding line items. Discussion approval of the following appointments and resignations, appointments. So we've heard some comment on the Community Preservation Appointment. Some of this email correspondence and things happened last minute. It was something that I had asked to be put on the agenda with my understanding that the CPC had met and deliberated and voted and made a recommendation. We do have the Chair, Arden Russell, here, if you'd come forward.
Hi, Arden Russell Sturgess Lane. I am the Chair of the CPC. I did, at the very late time today, get a email concern from one of the members of the committee. And out of a sense of trying to be cooperative, I thought that we would postpone and have an opportunity to discuss her concerns. However, that does not mean that I agree with them in any way. I, we did take a unanimous vote to recommend one of two people who applied. If the Select Board's policy is to interview both of the candidates, then you could have put both of the candidates on the agenda. It wasn't, I didn't set this Select Board agenda. So we shared with you what our recommendation was of the two candidates. And that is the recommendation that you have before us. There was one motion to do that, and it was unanimous. So.
So, you know, I guess I was a little bewildered by it all. I wasn't in attendance at that meeting. I had other conflicts with my schedule. And so, you know, in your opinion as Chair, was there any procedural violations to?
There's no procedural violations. I guess what the concern is, is that the Select Board criteria, I think, is a little I'll say weird. You know, it asks, it asks us to send forward multiple candidates. Well, there were two candidates. So what was our job if we're sending forward two candidates? We did interview both candidates. We chose one of those two as a recommendation to share with you our recommendation. And then if you wanted to hear from all the candidates, I think that that's your agenda item to decide. You know, I just went through this. And I sat at a meeting and watched the board members vote for one of the two candidates and share with you their vote for one of the two candidates. It was the Select Board that then asked both candidates to be present.
Understood. So tonight, neither of the candidates are present based on some of the emails. So I'm a little caught off guard, but, you know, I would, I'd prefer to, just to appoint, but I don't know that it's fair to the candidates if the board wishes for them to be present.
Mr. Chair, may I ask?
Michaela?
I have a question. We're talking about Select Board policy or Select Board practice. Is that written somewhere? I mean, what policy?
Policy 19 and 65 both speak to setting the agenda. And then the other one speaks to selection process.
Okay. I usually have those.
Oh, no.
I have the book with me.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, John.
Arden, you are, you are correct. I mean, as far as the recommendation was taken. according to the policy, the only thing, you are correct, is as far as it require, or it recommends, I think, the chairperson should provide a minimum of two or a maximum of three candidates to review by the board of selectmen.
That's very hopeful.
Yeah. Right. So, I mean, and I know usually, you know, there's one opening, one candidate comes forward. I think the only thing is obviously neither candidate's here. So I think it's a little difficult. And you are right. You, I don't understand. From my understanding, the committee did everything correct. You made a recommendation. That's correct. According to the policy 001, both candidates should have been invited to, in front of the board of selectmen. And then we can, just like the last appointment with, it was affordable housing.
Yes.
We had multiple candidates. They come before us and we consider the recommendation of the committee and we make a decision. So, but my opinion, not having either candidate here, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable about moving forward, but that's.
Even with the unanimous recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't change. You know, I'm not saying I would change my, my mind or go against the recommendation. That's unanimous. But at the same time, it's a policy. It's, it's, and they're not here. So were they invited and they didn't show up? I'm not even sure. Was one invited and not the other? Or was either one invited? I'm not sure.
No, it was, no, it was, it was just, I think at the last minute, it was, it was, there was an email that was sent out to one of the applicants. I don't know if one was sent to the other, just, you know, saying that it was going to be tabled for, for procedural reasons. So it was a little confusing, but here we are. So, Michaela, did you have?
This happened at such the last minute, I would have policy with me, but I don't have anything to look at. Do you have a copy? Thank you.
I do.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Second page.
Who wrote the agenda? Who wrote, who typed up the agenda?
Well, the, the agenda, it was put on the agenda.
What staff person actually wrote the agenda?
It's the town manager's office.
And was it you, Rodney? Was it Wayne? Who was it?
It was not me personally.
This is why we need an investigation. Get staff involved.
I think, I think where we're at is just, it's slightly confusing. What happened, how it happened, I think is neither here nor there at this point in time, only because the people aren't here, the two candidates, to actually move forward the way we typically have in the past. The board, if they, you know, they, it sounds like they feel they'd prefer to have them both here to ask the questions. And even with fully considering the unanimous vote, and that has been the past practice. Town manager, you had something to add?
Yes. In regards to past practice, I, I just want to point out there may have been an issue there relative to the procedures of the open meeting compared to the policy. And I just want to clear that up. In terms of the, the agenda, there was a draft. I did review it. It was forwarded to the chair. And there was some discussion relative to that being inconsistent with a policy. That was brought to my attention. And long story short, as they say, it was going to be left on the agenda until tonight when I received an email from the chair. And I brought it to, well, it actually was brought to your attention as well. And that's about all I can say.
So, Michaela?
Sorry. So as I'm looking at this, and as I said, had this come out earlier, I would have been able to review the policy. But as I'm looking at it, and thank you for highlighting it, you have the procedures for evaluation of applicants, which seems to be followed. And then you have suitable ratings. And then you have as a recommendation that the board will provide a minimum of two. It's not necessarily a policy. It's not a procedure. It's a recommendation. And I think that should be taken into consideration as we decide how to move forward. It's not a requirement.
And it doesn't require them to be present for the board's consideration? Section D states that selectmen interview after review of any candidates recommended for appointment to a board, commission, committee, or council. Said candidates shall appear before the board of selectmen for a final interview at a regular scheduled meeting. Reappointments may not result in interviews by the board of selectmen. And if one of the applicants is the incumbent seeking reappointment recognition of their past performance as desired, when there is more than one vacancy to be filled, motions to appoint within a board, committee, commission, or council shall be made individually for each vacancy. So because, you know, it, it says shall in the interview process, you know, I feel as though at this time we're kind of forced because the folks aren't present based on policy 001. That'll be my recommendation. So we'll have to table this at this time until the next meeting. And at which point I'd like for both candidates to come before the board for full consideration.
And if I could just clarify, Mr. Chair, the piece that was brought to my attention was the part in three C, to which I quote, "The board commission, committee, or council chairperson will provide a summary of the interview process along with its recommendation to the board of selectmen, which should be select board. The chairperson should provide a minimum of two and a maximum of three candidates for review by the select board unless the minimum number of candidates does not exist. Such recommendations must always be in the best interests of the town and consistent with the provisions of this policy." End of quote. Now, I just want to clarify that I wasn't there. I don't know how the CPC voted. I don't know why they voted or whatever. And I want to distance myself as far from that as possible. What I will say.
We don't have minutes.
What's that?
We have minutes.
I don't have minutes.
But we do have the, you know, the email that was forwarded to us. It just frames the recommendation that the vote was taken and that they did vote on it. It wasn't, you know, the way I see it is, is that, you know, you only had two people. It wasn't like there were six.
Exactly.
There was two.
Exactly.
And because there was only two, you have a first and second choice.
Exactly.
I don't, I don't think it's complicated math in, in, in the recommendation. So I don't see the need for the matrix that was kind of put forward in other situations. That's my opinion. So for me, I, I really don't understand why, you know, there was any hesitation at all. You know, I, I think that was kind of stretching the recommendation piece in three C. But because we are where we are under three D, the selectman interview, it does say shall. And so we have to have them present at our next meeting in order to move forward.
Would you accept a motion to postpone?
I'd accept a motion to table to our next scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Would you include the additional member looking for during that period of time? Looking for a second member to be on the board?
There's already two. They already vetted, they already vetted out two people. And they provided a recommendation based on the two people. So we've already been through the solicitation process. We're at the stage where they've made the recommendation and it's on us for consideration and interview.
Interview, right.
For the policy 001, correct.
I think having an interview is key on that one as well.
And your office will take care of that, right? Inviting the people?
So we're inviting one person?
No.
No.
Two.
We have to, according to the policy, we're inviting both.
You, you can invite both, right?
Two.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify.
Excuse me.
What a policy.
I'm reading the policy differently. I'm reading the policy and maybe, as I said, after review of any, any candidates recommended for appointment. So we have one who's recommended for appointment, as far as I understand, to a board, commission, committee, or council. Said candidate shall appear before the board of selectmen for a final interview. So it's, that's how it reads.
I stand corrected.
If you, but you have to read down below. It says if there's multiple candidates.
Okay.
There's multiple candidates. There's not one. If there's one, it's obviously it's done.
It says one.
Correct. And that will be, this really, I, I have no.
I'm not seeing it, John.
Huh?
I said, I'm not, I'm, I'm looking, but I'm not seeing it. De-select board or selectman interview after review of any candidate for this, recommended for appointment to a board, commission, committee, or council. Said candidate shall appear. So we have one recommended, said, that's the said candidate. Shall appear before the board of selectmen for a final interview at a regular scheduled meeting. Then it goes on to reappointments. Reappointments may not result. And that's, that's not germane to this.
Are you reading page three?
That's, that's the interview process.
I'm reading selectman interview process.
Read.
D.
That's, that's the.
And page three.
That applies.
The third page of three, the top.
Page two.
But page two is on the recommendations. So that's for the committee that they're being appointed to, to make the recommendation to the board. The one that applies specifically to the board is the selectman interview. It's not, it's not.
I, I. Yeah, because I'm just going by practice, what we just did with affordable housing. If we follow the same practice, we had candidates.
They sent you two candidates.
They sent us two.
The CDC only sent you one.
So they provided a nice little tabled matrix with, you know, recommendations for each one. And they provided three at varying levels.
Only one candidate?
There was, there was more, there was more people in the pool. And they provided a ma- matrix with three recommendations, as I remember it. So, you know, this is slightly different. There was only two. They made, they conducted their interviews, they made a recommendation and, and put, put it forward. You know, reading over the policy, you know, if you could ask Ms. Evant to come forward for the next meeting, the way I, I see it, I do agree with Michaela that, you know, the way it reads, it sounds like the recommendation is to come forward, the recommendation of the board for the final interview. Moving on to the next. Or did we take a vote? We did not take a vote. Motion to table to our next regularly scheduled meeting. I did get a first and second. I think we went into discussion. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Can we, actually, I'm just, I just don't want to have this go wrong. Could we amend that? Just have, just get a legal opinion to make sure that we're following the policy correct? Just to make sure. Because I don't want to go down this road that we, we do this at the next meeting and we're, we're down this road of we did something wrong. Because that's, that would be.
I don't see the harm in it, but.
That's, I, I just.
Better have Claire.
I'd accept the motion to amend the motion to include.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last piece.
Just to get legal opinion to confirm that we're, the understanding of.
Interpretation of the policy 001, as it applies to the select board specifically.
Of inviting one or two. And however it is, it doesn't matter. I mean, we just have to move on.
We want, we want clarification that we can invite the one candidate that was.
So my understanding is you're requesting that council provide a
Interpret.
impartial interpretation of the spirit and the intent of the policy.
Correct.
And that's it. And then I'll receive that opinion. And I'm going to make sure my email is included to you. So you see what I say and then you see what he says. And then it'll be distributed. And once it's distributed to you, it's a public document.
Right. And we're, we're still looking for a third member, are we not?
No.
After that, we're not. We're only looking for two members?
No, we're not trying to complicate, complicate. No.
But.
They've already made the recommendation.
Just for clarity, Mr. Chair, I am correct. That's what I'm charged with.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes. John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Motion's unanimous by all presence. Moving on, the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee nomination and recommendation of Ralph Brandt. Term expires June 30th, 2023. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom? Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. The motion's unanimous by all present. Moving on, we have. They didn't need the recommenda-, they didn't even need you present. You just flew right through. Only candidate. Moving on, we have the Bonsable County Dredge Committee.
Point of order, point of order. I, I'm sorry to belabor this. I have a question. How is what we, we just decided different from what we chose not to decide? Since we chose not to interview? I, I, it's a point of order for me. I don't understand how we tabled something because someone wasn't here. And yet somebody was here and we, we just moved forward without speaking to them. So if the interview is not required, why are we saying it is? I, I'm, I think it's a point of order that's important for us to consider.
I have to take a little bit of responsibility in that because I, I didn't ask him to come forward. And, you know, it was my understanding that only one, there was only one consideration for that appoint, appointment. So it, it wasn't the same. And so I, I moved forward with, without even asking him to step forward. That, that's my error.
And nobody else asked him to step forward or needed to interview him, so.
That point.
Thank you.
Could I just clarify one thing? Is that all right? Can I address the question?
Yes. Jay Marie, if you could come to the microphone?
Yeah, to the table. Yeah. No, I just wanted to say that Mr. Brandt was told that he should come. And I don't know if that happened with the other candidates.
Typically, typically on new appointees, unless they're returning, new appointees, we do ask to come in.
Right.
And, and to be present in case the, the board does have any concerns.
But I don't, I, I'm just saying that in our case, he was asked to attend.
I got thrown off a little bit by all the previous deliberation and discussion and, and failed to ask him to come forward. So I, I own that. And my apologies, my apologies to Mr. Brandt for doing so. Moving on to the Bonsable County Dredge Committee. Robert Tumano?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully this is not controversial. The harbor master is the appointee. And the county schedule is December 31st, 2023, whereas our typical schedule goes to June 30th, 2023. So we're just asking to get into sync with the county schedule. And I take full responsibility for telling him he does not have to be here tonight. So if you don't want to act on it, then I will have him here at the next meeting.
Isn't this like a reappointment? I mean, it's.
Yes.
It's the same thing.
It's just changing the. And it's just changing the, uh, term to December 31st to be consistent with the county schedule.
Exactly.
Because our schedule is June 30th.
So no need for him to be here.
And it, and it does create a little confusion.
So I'd accept a motion to approve and recommend Robert Tumano, whose term shall expire December 31st, 2023.
So moved.
At this time.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion's unanimous by all present. Was there one more in the packet? Oh, no. Uh, resignations. Uh, Zoning Board of Appeals, Norman J. Gold, whose term expires June 30th, 2024. Uh, at this time, I, we have his letter. I'd accept a motion to, um, accept his resignation with a letter of gratitude.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion is unanimous by all present. Uh, Cultural Council, resignation, uh, letter was received, uh, from Mary Alice Dahlker, uh, whose term expires September 30th, 2023. Uh, so at this time, I'd accept a motion to, um, accept and approve the resignation letter from Mary Alice Dahlker.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion? Seeing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion's unanimous. Uh, next, this brings us to the discussion and approval of amendments to the host community agreement with Cape Cod Cannabis Mashpee Holdings LLC, Peter Freeman, and Larissa Kavaleva. Did I pronounce that right?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. For the record, I'm Peter Freeman from Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant, and Larissa Kavaleva is here, she is a manager of the applicant. Uh, just brief history, I think it's pretty straightforward. Uh, another victim of COVID in a way. The company has, has a host agreement with the town for a cultivation and product manufacturing facility in Mashpee at 79 Echo Road. It was dated May 30th, 20, I'm sorry, May 30th, 2019, before COVID. Uh, and about a year ago, and I didn't represent the company at the time, but about a year ago, uh, the other manager, Mr. Baker, sent a letter to the town asking for both an extension for two years, which would have brought it to 24, May 30th, 2024, as well as a change in location to 40 Evergreen Circle. And for some reason, and human error, COVID, everything perhaps was disruptive, but my client never heard back from the town, and they came to me, I believe in the fall of last year, because I had communication in October with, I believe, Mr. Taylor, and then Evan Lirr, I was told to contact, so, um, it's a serious matter, I don't want to call it a comedy of errors, but my client tried in good faith to have a meeting such as this meeting with you folks to ask for, officially meet with you folks about the extension and change in location. Uh, and the reason for those requests, our COVID really turned things upside down. Uh, it made it very difficult with supply chain for the companies that were going to build, uh, for example, the prefabricated structures on the, on the facility, um, they weren't available, uh, they weren't, they were told it wouldn't be available until mid 2023, or sometime in 2023. Um, and they also investigating found that there were more costs involved that they didn't expect because of site conditions at the Echo Road location. Uh, so all in all, and when I looked at it, it certainly seemed like typical, fair, reasonable request, which is essentially the simple standard on granting an extension, um, as well as in this case, change in location. Um, and, uh, forgive me for a bit of an afterthought, but I sent in today just for your edification that the Permit Extension Act that was passed by the legislature because of the COVID emergency, uh, in effect, already has extended the, uh, date of May, uh, 30th, 2023, which would have been the lapse period in one sense, I'll come back to that. Uh, it already has extended it for the tolling period, so-called, between March 10th, 2020, and when the emergency was declared ended by then Governor Well, uh, Governor Weld Rice, that goes back away, sorry, Governor Baker, uh, which was June 15th of 2021. So, uh, 462 days, which is what the tolling period is, gets added, so it would be September 5th. Um, but the, the period of three years isn't the termination, which is five years if they stop operating, but the three years says that they have to commence operations, and that's what became really a sticky wick, and very difficult because of COVID and the location problems that they encountered. Uh, so we still stand by a request for, as we said, two years. We're actually here also to ask because of the fact that, again, casting no aspersions, no blame, but they asked a year ago, so another year would have been lost. So we're asking, if you will, extend it for actually three years, so three years from the, would have been the termination. So instead of 24, have it extended, or, or yes, extended until May 30th of 2025. Because after they get, um, hopefully, your approval on the extension and the change in location, they still have to go to the State Commission, uh, and further paperwork and details, and all of the planning and actual activity has been really on hold all this long period. Uh, so, uh, happy to answer questions, but it, we, we do think it's really straight, straightforward and justified that the change in location be approved to 40 Evergreen Circle, as well as the extension until, as I just said, not two years, but three years from the, uh, end of the three, what would have been the three-year period, so that the time to commence operations is extended until May 30th of 2025. Thank you.
Just to point a clarity, there's a typo in the recommendation.
Yeah, well, uh, the recommendation was the two years that was originally given to us, that's why it's there, but, um, Mr. Freeman is correct, we did get the information, and you all had it, I dropped it off on your desks, uh, before the meeting, so you had that. Uh, there have been, uh, prior to Mr. Freeman getting involved, uh, we did have some communication issues with Evan and this company, um, but since Mr. Freeman's been on, it's, it, the communications has been there. I have to say, one month I dropped the ball, so I'll take, you know, full responsibility there. Uh, but they have been very, uh, come to us, uh, a couple of times on this, so, um, the, the date was on there because of the two-year, and when he just wanted to go to the 25th, 25, I'm sorry, 2025.
So it's like starting all over again?
I was like.
More or less.
And as far as the actual host community agreement, um, towards the back of a packet, there was no substantive changes to that at all? That remains.
No, it, it's the same, it's just the location has changed.
Location and the extension to the.
And extension.
Tolling period. So at this time, I'd accept a motion, uh, for host community agreement amendment and extension for the, uh, Cape Cod Cannabis Mashpee Holdings LLC, um, that the Select Board votes to approve the amendments proposed by the Cape Cod Cannabis Commission, uh, Committee Mashpee Holdings LLC to the existing Host Community Agreement, HCA, with regard to extending the Host Community Agreement until May 29th, 2025, and further to change the location of the cannabis cultivation and production facility from Echo, 79 Echo Road Mashpee to 40 Evergreen Circle Mashpee, pending review and approval by the appropriate boards, committees, commissions, and Town Council, and further authorize the Town Manager to execute the amended and extended HCA on the Board's behalf.
So moved. Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion? Seeing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Abstain.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Um, that's four yeses, one abstention. That motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, we have, uh, discussion and approval of the following temporary sign permits and special events. The first on our list is the annual Boston Interiors, Interiors Annual Tent Sale, being held May 15th through May 21st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
So it's a motion to approve?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Uh, hearing a first and second, um, any discussion? This is an annual event they do every year, and I'm stating for the crowd, Carol, thank you. Seeing no discussion, um, Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, that motion is unanimous. Uh, moving on, I have the temporary sign, uh, annual Falmouth Road and Gun Annual Yard Sale, being held May 23rd through Ju-, June 30th, 2023. At this time, I'd accept a motion to approve this, uh, request. Hearing a first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Uh, that motion passes unanimously. Um, next, we have, uh, motion to approve the Veterans War Memorial and Dedication Ceremony, Saturday, June 17th, 2023. Um, Mr. Richard DeSaga, would you like to come up and explain? This is a new event. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Costello.
Hi. Uh, Richard DeSaga and Ava Costello from the War Memorial Committee. Mashpee will dedicate a very special monument to our veterans on Saturday, June 17th. The monument will actually contain the names of all 252 men and women from Mashpee who served in our nation's wars, from the Revolutionary War to the Vietnam War, including the names of 21 who never returned, giving the ultimate sacrifice. This is historic, as in addition to honoring all our veterans who served for Mashpee in those wars, we feel it is perhaps the only monument in the country that will contain the actual names of all Native Americans from one town that fought and sacrificed in all the wars up to the Vietnam War. After four years of research using military, town, state, and tribal records, we have completed the monument. On Saturday, June 17th, with a rain date of June 25th, which would be at 1 o'clock, and that would just be the ceremony, no parade, uh, we're asking you to save the date, as we will dedicate the monument with a parade and a ceremony at the monument's location over in Community Park. We hope all will be able to, uh, and be available to join us in this dedication of this special monument, as we honor all from our country who sacrificed and served. The parade, uh, we're asking, uh, will start behind Town Hall at 10:00 AM and proceed down Route 130, up here to Great Neck Road North, down Collins Lane, and into the park. The ceremony would take place at the park's gazebo, and it'll begin at the close of the parade, and, and at the end of the ceremony at the gazebo, all will be invited to proceed to the monument for its unveiling. State, federal, uh, officials have been invited, along with area VFW Legion posts. Uh, the Honor Guard and Supporting Crew members of the USS Constitution will be marching, along with our local, uh, scouts, military vehicles from Joint Base Cape Cod, the Mashpee Fire Department, town and tribal police vehicles, dancers and drummers from the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, and other veteran groups. Now, this is actually phase two of our monument plan. Phase one was completed last year with the addition of 21 honor stones honoring, uh, in addition to the stones that were there, from two from Afghanistan and two from Iraq, that are located over in Veterans Garden. Phase three, uh, will actually begin this fall, and that's planning for the monument honoring those who served in Iraq, Afghanistan, as well as Operation Desert Shield, Desert Storm. Since the war in Afghanistan was still ongoing when we began this research and design on the monument some four years ago, uh, we were prevented from actually finalizing our research. Now that that war is over, we'll begin to work on that monument. Now, with the upcoming parade dedication and unveiling, we will remember all from Mashpee in each of the wars by having their names internally engraved and granted for all to see and remember, so that no one will ever forget. And uniquely Cape Cod, the monument will be in the shape of a wave. We invite all five members of this board to participate in the parade and ceremony, and hope that the Chair will say a few words acknowledging our veterans and this monument on behalf of the town of Mashpee. Uh, we have invited members of the Tribal Council, as well as surrounding town select boards and the Barnstable Town Council to also participate. The reason for this is since Mashpee did not become a town officially recognized by the Commonwealth until 1870, those who fought in the Revolutionary War and the Civil War actually would had to go to a bordering town to officially enlist. Parking, uh, we talked about is an issue. Handicap parking and parking for seniors and elders will be available behind the archive building. Sections of Route 130, Great Neck Road North will be closed for the parade. I believe Wayne has a map, uh, that the Board has. Uh, police will begin shutting down those road sections at 9:30. Satellite parking will be available at the Quashnet School with shuttle bus transportation to and from Community Park. Now, some seating will be available, but we just want to stress, anyone wishing to sit during the ceremony is urged to bring their own lawn chair. We will have reserved seating for all invited participants. Uh, we're actually calling the week of June 11th to 17th Honoring Mashpee Veteran Week and the 17th Honoring Mashpee Veteran Day, and we're urging all businesses and town citizens to join us in displaying the American flag and bunting, uh, during the week and honoring our veterans by attending the ceremony and the unveiling of the monument. Uh, we anticipate the ceremony to last, um, well, actually, to begin a little before 11 o'clock. It is not a long parade route. Uh, it'll last about 45 minutes, and then at that time, we'll invite everyone to proceed over to the monument. We're going to ask all veterans, uh, to then stand in front of the monument to act as an Honor Guard, and then those who, whose names are actually on the monument will do the actual unveiling. Once unveiled, we believe this new monument will become a source of great pride, uh, to all in Mashpee, especially our veterans. Before, um, Ava gives out, uh, the invitations to you, I, I just want to give an aside, and I want to give a shout out, uh, to our DPW Director, uh, who has basically been our clerk of the works in keeping track of the progress of this monument. I hope this board and this town appreciates what a valuable asset that Catherine is to this community, and what an excellent group of town employees make up our DPW. From the Historical Commission, we see firsthand all she does from us. From this project to the work and planning of the restoration we're doing on our ancient burial grounds, to helping with the one-room schoolhouse, and just about every activity and proj-, project that we undertake, we rely upon Catherine and the DPW. She and they truly do an amazing job, and I think often, because it's out of sight, it's often not recognized. So we just want to give a shout out, shout out and thank you to Catherine and the crew at the DPW. And then Ava has the, the actual invitations, and she'll try a little bit about the artists that designed this.
And Richard, you did an awful lot of research of all these names for the last three years, you've been doing this.
It was, it was challenging.
Yes, it was.
To say the least.
I have to also say that, you know, in, uh, working with Richard from time to time, he's an amazing researcher.
Yes, he is.
Um, there's nobody that's more thorough, and he does his due diligence and tracks down information, um, at great extent. So, you know, thank you for, we're fortunate to have you working with us.
I actually have nightmares that it's going to be a wrong name. If, if we, if we left a name off, that's okay, because we left a space and you can add in. But if there's a wrong name, we can't get it out of the granite, so I've gone over and over that list, believe me, that's my one fear.
No, we're fortunate to have you, um, on our Historical Commission.
No, we're fortunate to have you on our Historical Commission.
And for those of you who want, like a copy, please leave it in the bag.
You had said that Ava was going to give a little update on the artwork. Wait.
Ava?
Oh, I thought you were doing that. I wasn't paying attention to what you were saying or not saying. The artist who did this for us is Karen Ronaldo, who I believe a lot of you know. She had done the one-twenty-fifth poster, and she's just been amazing to work with. But the thing that was more touching for me with working with her is that as soon as I said, "We're doing this," I'm wondering if you, at the time, she said, "I would be so honored to do this for the town of Mashpee." She said, I, even though she lives in Falmouth, Mashpee is part of her heart, and she was just thrilled to be asked to do it, and I couldn't even ask for something better than what she has done for us.
We hope to be able to actually flood all the different stores, so this is the poster that you'll see, hopefully with hope from the Chamber of Commerce will help us put these posters in the store. So this would be a week, a town event, that everyone in the town can get a chance to really honor our veterans.
We're planning on doing a rollout with the enterprise, so that we can talk about what's happening ahead of time, what we'd like to see individuals do within the town, so that they won't just, the Thursday before the, or Friday before the event, see it in the paper. So we want to get as many people involved as we can, and hopefully it won't rain.
I have a meeting with the chamber, after hours tomorrow night with the businesses, so I will give them your name so they can get in touch with you, and I'll give them some of the posters.
Okay, good, because we've had some trouble getting hold of them back and forth.
I'll do it.
We wish you the best of luck. We're going to take a vote now to approve the special event.
Could I just say one thing? I just wanted to let them know, we did get two portable signs promised to us, providing there's no emergency for the road closures, because that one-thirty will be closed for about an hour. So I just wanted to make sure you folks know, there's going to be some signage well ahead.
And has the, has the graphic been shared with Mashpee TV and hosted on that for?
We've been in touch with them. They've been very supportive.
This is the first time that the graphic is being seen in public.
Okay, it, it looks.
If you're wondering where the monument is.
It's where that sign is, that says, "What's in the space?"
It's actually, Catherine just spoke, it's going to arrive shortly before Memorial Day, and so it will be in place. We will not be able to have all the cobble, the pavers around it. That will be done after the ceremony is over, but we wanted to get it before the summer season and everything comes in, but it is coming.
So it's Christmas.
All done.
I believe we had a motion and a second. We're in the discussion. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Thank you for all your hard work, both Richard and Ava and all the other staff, members of the Housing, the Historic Commission, or Historic Committee, really. Third special event, accept a motion to approve the special permit request for the third annual Race Amity Day Festival, to be held Sunday, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Rowella?
Second.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion's unanimous by all present and past. I think the last one that we have is the, I'd accept a motion to approve the special event of the second summer cycle, to be held Sunday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. W. Patrick Lentil?
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second, does the committee, does the board have any questions for Mr. Lentil?
Don't.
This is a second annual, so we've done this before.
No, it's the first annual.
First annual?
Yes. It's second summer cycle. Second summer is because of the Cape Cod Chambers working to increase the participation of people coming to the Cape in the second summer. In other words, September, October, and November, and that's where the second summer name came from. There used to, there used to be a cycling event on the Cape called the Last Gas, which died out a couple of years ago, and we've decided to start this event instead. And there are three starting points for the event. One will be at the corner of Donna's Lane and Great Neck Road South. We will meet in the parking lot at the library at Mashpee Commons, and ride over as a group to Donna's Lane and Great Neck Road South, and from there, we will proceed down to South Cape Beach, turn around and come back, and go around the Rotary, and go on Great Neck Road North, and to proceed to Route one thirty, and take Route one thirty to the Service Road. And then we will take the Service Road through parts of Sandwich and Barnstable, and the whole ride will end at Mata Field in Provincetown. It'll be approximately ninety-three miles from the start in Mashpee. The second start will be in Sandwich, and we're planning on starting at the Heritage Plantation, and riding from Heritage to the Service Road, and then join with a ride that starts in Mashpee. That will be approximately seventy miles. And then we'll have a thirty-three mile section of the ride that will start in Orleans at Red Brook Harbor, and ride from Red Brook Harbor to Mata Field in P-Town.
Sounds like a very demanding route. I commend all the participants for completing it.
We're expecting between four and five hundred for the whole event. From Mashpee, we're expecting somewhere around a hundred people that will start in Mashpee.
Are you a nonprofit or for-profit?
There are actually eighteen nonprofits involved. There are eighteen beneficiaries. The race itself is being put on by the Cape Cod Blue Economy, which is a part of the Cape Cod Chamber, and they've hired me as the race director, excuse me, ride director. It is not a race. It's a ride director of the event. So it is for nonprofits, and there are eighteen involved in the event.
That's good.
Each ride, each nonprofit has to bring ten riders and ten volunteers. We will have two hundred volunteers on the course, and at the starts and finish, there will be a marshal at every single turn on the event. We will, we will have a motorcycle contingent that will be patrolling the event. There'll be not police motorcycles, they will be motorcycle clubs that will be working with us to do it, and we will have designated riders from each group that will be working with it. We will have ten water stops, or ten aid stations, and at the water stops, we will have medical personnel. We will also have three to four SAG vehicles, which will be following the event from each, from the different starts, with repair equipment and so forth for the bikes. We want it to be the safest event on the Cape for bicycling.
Sounds like you've done your due diligence to ensure that, so, you know, wish you the best of luck. I'll take the vote at this time, if there's no further discussion. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Good luck and safe travels on the event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Communications and correspondence. Moving on to new business, we have discussion or approval of revisions to the Select Board Policy Seventy-nine, Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee. We received a memo from Chair Marie Stevenson from the MIDC on April seventeenth, requesting that at the MIDC meeting held on January seventeenth, a vote was taken to add the term "belonging" to goal five of Policy Seventy-nine. The committee is requesting approval of goal five to read as follows: "Support of, suggest programs or activities that promote a cultural, a culture of respect and belonging for all persons." And so, at this time, I'd accept a motion to add the language as stated to goal number five of Policy Seventy-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? No discussion. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion's unanimous by all present. Thank you. Discussion on a possible approval of purchasing electronic voting systems for town meetings. Town manager, town moderator, and town clerk.
Let me respectfully request the.
Deb K.
Town moderator and town clerk to come up.
Welcome, Mr. Moderator.
If I could stop, Mr. Chair, I just want to advise you and the board that the town recently became informed of these electronic voting devices or system in Chatham, and you should have the paperwork in your packet. And in addition to the information in the packet, the town, or assistant town manager did reach out to the town of Chatham and received positive feedback. I personally reached out to our town council, who not only attends our town meetings, but also attends Chatham Town Meetings as council, and he too gave it a positive evaluation. I think it's fair to say that there will be a time-saving, there will be a privacy that will be maintained, and who's voting for what, and there will be operational efficiency enhanced. My proposal, if you were to so authorize, would be to use funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as Opera Funds. We currently have a total of five hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and eleven cents in this account. I would be, or I should say, you would be authorizing me to expend less than twenty-five thousand, and if I do hit the twenty-five thousand threshold, it has to go to CIP, but I am not anticipating that. I do believe that this is a sound recommendation for various reasons, but I also have, unless it's changed, I have the full support of the town clerk and the town moderator, and I would also defer to them.
You certainly have the town moderator's full support. This is another opportunity for Mashpee to take a leadership role and advance into the twenty-first century. Some of the positive points that the town manager made certainly apply here. There's a speed benefit, there's an accuracy benefit. Every vote, in effect, is a secret ballot vote, a secret vote, and as the town clerk and some of you know that have gone through a secret ballot experience in this town or other towns, it's kind of a nightmare to administer. There's an audit trail that's available. The system, there are several companies that make the software for these systems. All of them are closed-circuit mechanisms, there's no outside connection to the internet. The way that it operates is each voter, when they check in, is issued instead of an index card, a clicker that typically has two buttons on it, yes or no. And whenever a vote is called for, they have twenty to thirty seconds that we determine to cast their vote. Within that twenty or thirty seconds, they can change their vote, so whatever the last yes or no button is that they push is the one that gets recorded. It can be displayed on a screen, so if there's a majority vote, or a four-fifths vote, or a two-thirds vote that's required, it's instantly displayed for everybody to see, so there's no downtime for the moderator to calculate the mathematics of what's involved. I think a big plus for me is, as you, as we've all experienced, when there's a voice vote on something that's a close call, and the moderator had asked to repeat that vote, typically the people that voted yea and the people that voted nay would simply do the same thing again with twice the volume, which doesn't necessarily make it any clearer as to what the outcome is. So this would eliminate any interference from non-voters that might be in the hall that could influence a voice vote.
And I should have added one thing, Mr. Chair. I should have mentioned this before. This would enable us to purchase eight hundred of these. There is a option of, where's Mr. Dubrowski? Is he here? We have, we have the option of either leasing or purchasing. I'm glad I brought laughter, Mr. Chair. So my recommendation to you is to enable me, to empower me to purchase, and we would purchase eight hundred. Now, in all seriousness, I also want to add that if you were thinking, "Well, what happens if we had more than eight hundred?" First of all, I think Madam Clerk would agree, it's been quite a while, if ever, but if we did reach a point where we thought there was going to be an excessive amount of people showing up for one particular issue, then we have the option of renting additional ones that would go beyond the eight hundred that we would have purchased. We would just have to obviously pay for that. So I think those are two things that I forgot to mention in my initial presentation, that I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of, and I'm sorry.
I might just quickly add, too, that the Cape Towns, Chatham, Eastham, Bourne, Falmouth, which is a representative town meeting format with a couple hundred members, and about seventy-five other municipalities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have adopted electronic voting as a standard. I had a conversation last week with Bill Litchfield, the moderator in Chatham, who, as the town manager said, was very enthusiastic about it. They've had great success there, and it's been welcomed by attendees. I'll be the first to concede that there would certainly be a view among some of our fine citizens, that the tradition of participating by raising your hand and holding a card or having voice votes is something of a legacy in town meeting circuits throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, this being no exception. But I think the many benefits that we would derive from this modest investment will speed up town meetings, make them more reliable and more appealing, and also inhibit, not inhibit people from choosing not to vote just because they don't like to share their voting history with the person in the seat next to them.
Also, Mr. Chair, consistent with the procurement laws, we are seeking quotes from Also, Mr. Chair, consistent with the procurement laws, we are seeking quotes from three different vendors, just to let you know.
Couple of questions I had was, one is, does the machine have to be calibrated? Is there maintenance fees along that line? The other one-
For these counters?
The receiving end.
The ones that they're going to be clicking?
The data collector, you know, the main component, these are the kind of clickers-
This would be in the back? I have no idea how those, how that machine records the information. I can tell you that if it's not going to be a difficult situation, the pole pads that we have are going to be able to log the number, the serial number, into Deborah Kay, what clicker numbers you got. So if one of them doesn't turn up, we know who has it. It will also give the non-voters an opportunity to sit in and listen to the meeting and talk if they have questions, go up to the mic. They will be kept separate still. They won't be intermingling with the voters, but they will have an opportunity to sit in the room and hear the meeting going forward.
I guess the other question that I had was, you know, it'd be my preference to find clickers that are rechargeable. You know, I think you're gonna, if you have batteries in there-
I believe all of the systems that we would consider or get bids from are battery-operated. And if, and they're all tested in advance, and if for some reason one is not functioning, that's easily identified by the operator of the session, and the clicker can be replaced.
But are the batteries rechargeable? Are you purchasing, you know, batteries every meeting? Batteries don't last forever?
That I don't know.
And, you know, burning through lithium-
My guess is they would be battery-operated.
Burning through lithium cell batteries-
Not rechargeable.
Burning through lithium cell batteries and, you know, where you're only using it twice a year, I don't see longevity to batteries, so it sounds like you're going to be purchasing them every time. If there's an option out there that they're rechargeable with a docking station, I would prefer that route than purchasing batteries for eight hundred clickers, you know, annually, semi-annually.
With all due respect, if we have to turn them off, though, they should still be good batteries for at least a couple of years.
Think so.
I would think so. I would hope so.
I'm sure that information is available through the manufacturer of the sales reps.
Right. And I'm sure in today's day of technology, there's got to be a USB port or something that would be charging these clickers.
Is a good question to ask.
I think a docking station would be helpful. Connecting eight hundred clickers to recharge trickle charge would be cumbersome for anybody.
Probably looking at a couple of hundred per tray.
Dave, just the one that I have spoken to recently, they use a battery, coin-type battery, the small silver batteries goes in a watch. They also have a battery life indicator on the unit itself, so that you know where the battery situation is.
I think I was trying to get around disposing of batteries.
No, I understand, I'm just-
Every so often. If there's a way to, if there's a rechargeable version, then I would prefer that just being environmentally friendly. And these devices and things, they're broadly accepted, and I don't see anything citing Mass General Law compliance or anything like that. That's a non-issue?
It's a non-issue, to my knowledge, and also there are several towns that are using them. But I think Chatham was the one that was convenient to check with because of location.
Chelmsford was the first town in Massachusetts to adopt it in two thousand eleven, so they're about eighty altogether now. And actually, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it's, I believe it's the moderator's prerogative as to the means by which votes are taken and counted at town meetings. It would certainly be helpful to have the blessing of the Select Board, not to mention the fact that the moderator is unable to personally fund that acquisition.
It'll definitely expedite town meetings. So I guess I'd accept a motion to approve the town manager to take all necessary actions to fully consider and purchase the electronic voting system per the recommendations.
Not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
Not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Seeing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, and that motion is unanimous by all present. Moving on, we have a discussion and approval of the July through December twenty-twenty-three Select Board meeting schedule. Everyone has the meeting schedule?
It always makes like the half a year goes by so fast.
I know.
Seems like we just did this yesterday. So I'd accept a motion to approve the presented meeting schedule, running from July through December twenty-twenty-three, as presented.
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Seeing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion is unanimous by all present. No additional topics. Liaison reports?
I do. I can find my paper, yes, I do. The EDIC met at our last meeting, and we had Sarah Chase come in from the Commons to give us an update of the new businesses, and because we noticed that most of all the storefronts were getting full, and some were saying, we're moving. So we found out from Sarah that a lot of businesses are moving into bigger locations, and new businesses are coming in. For one, an independent business is where Color Me Mine is on the corner will be moving to a bigger store, and a husband and wife team are going to be opening up a fast casual seafood restaurant, which will be something new in the Commons. And national businesses are looking to come in. We have J. Jill and Lululemon, and a spa is coming in in August. Hatchville Cookie Company is doing very well. Anchor Two Anchor is opening up, I think, this week, and Island Outfitters are opening up next week. Chatham Breeze just opened last week. And she was giving us a little update of housing issue. And they've decided to come up with repurposing commercial space. An organization in town, not Hui, that has people that come into work and study for a part of the year, for like three months or six months, and they're working with the Commons to possibly repurpose the old Massage Envy space up above Rory's and do dorms, dorm rooms, so people can come in and work like three months and use a dorm room. Each person would have their own private room and a shared bathroom at the end of the hall and a shared kitchen. So it's nice to see that they're coming up with ideas on trying to bring more help into town and to be able to house them, because this, this organization can't bring in quality people to work for three and six months for them and to house them. It's gotten pretty expensive. So they're working on that idea, and of course, they're working on workforce and affordable housing on the forty B footprint and trying to create single-family homes with smaller lot size. And they've also had a boutique hotel interested in setting up in a location in the Commons. It would be possibly ninety rooms and would have, would not have a restaurant or cafe because they want to use what's in the Commons for their footprint. And, and they want the shopping to be a draw. So there's lots going on in the business community, and kind of nice to know that they're sitting down trying to figure out and repurposing space. And that was good. It was a very good meeting. She did a very good job.
Thank you for that. Any other liaison reports at this time? Water quality updates? Any water quality updates? Hearing none, town manager updates?
Yes, again, the groundbreaking ceremony for the Affordable Housing Project is Wednesday, May thirty-first, ten-thirty a.m. at nine-fifty Falmouth Road, Route twenty-eight. Also, we've had a little issue that more and more people are starting to learn about as far as the Poppin' Ass and Approach Channel is concerned. The county dredge this spring ran into some complications, and I have reached out, Select Board Member Wyman Columbo in her other role, and we've tried to address that issue. And quite frankly, there's just going to be a delay. There's just nothing that we can do about it because of the piping plovers and because of the delays. And I know I've dealt with Selectman O'Hara in the past with this due to the delays at the county level. It was beyond our control, and there was just nothing else that we could do. The Sewer Commission did send a letter of culmination to Consultant Ray Jack, so I think the grand total is now up to three compliments for our town staff this evening. And I also want to point out that there's going to be a presentation on educating residents about energy efficiency and energy savings by Representatives Fernandez and Viera on Tuesday, May sixteenth, in the Oakmont Meeting Room right here at Mashpee Town Hall, beginning at five-thirty.
Was the date on that last one?
I'm sorry, May sixteenth, tomorrow.
Mr. Chair, if I could also just add, anybody that would like to go to the groundbreaking, we'll just send a message to Terry and she'll RSVP for you guys, so you don't, we can just do one lump. So if you're planning on attending, please just let Terry know in the office, and we'll make sure that your RSVP is done. Thank you.
Will do. Next item on the agenda is the reorganization of the board. At this time, accept nominations and election of a chair, vice chair, and clerk of the Select Board.
I make a motion to nominate John Cotton as chair and Tom O'Hara as vice chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
On both or one or?
No, one at a time.
I can do one at a time.
Yeah.
Okay. A nomination for chair would be John Cotton.
Second.
All right, so we have a first and second on chair, and-
Are you going to call for other nominations?
If there's any, yeah, now would be the time.
Okay, thank you. Given that Chair David Whedon was elected chair nine months ago and has thus served in this role for less than one year, and given that, he has been elected to the Select Board three times and has only had one opportunity to serve as chair, and that was for a partial term. And most importantly, given that Chair Whedon has demonstrated calm and thoughtful leadership, which has resulted in civil, collaborative, and productive board meetings, I nominate Chair Whedon for the office of Chair of the Select Board. And Robert's rules, you don't need a second. I should have said point of order. Robert's rules, you don't need a second.
Thank you for the nomination. So we'll go in the order of the nominations for the chair position first, and then we'll take up the other positions subsequently. So are the nomination is John as chair? Any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Abstain.
And I'll abstain as well. The nomination of myself for the position of chair. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
John?
No.
Carol?
I abstain.
And I abstain. So that motion fails. John, you're the new chair. Vice chair, any nominations for vice chair?
A motion for Tom O'Hara, vice chair.
So I assume same applies, we don't need a second. Were there any other nominations for vice chair?
Given everything I said earlier, I nominate Chair David Whedon as vice chair.
Thank you for the nomination. We'll go in the same order. Any discussion on the two appointments for vice chair? Seeing none. Michaela, on the nomination of, recommendation of Tom O'Hara being vice chair, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I abstain on that one as well. Moving on, Carol, you vote on myself as vice chair?
Abstain.
John?
Abstain.
Tom?
Abstain.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'll abstain on that one as well. For the clerk, any nominations for clerk?
I motion Carol Sherman as clerk.
Second.
Any other nominations for clerk? So we'll start on this side. Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
John? Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well on that one.
Thank you.
So we have our newly appointed officers of the Select Board. And at this time, I'd entertain a motion to move the board into convene an executive session to discuss a strategy with respect to the pending litigation in the matter of the Department of Industrial Accidents, Claim Number one-seven-two-two-zero-three-one-nine-seven-four, Dean Clark, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, per General Laws, Chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one, A, three. The Select Board will not reconvene in open sessions.
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.